There we go. Good evening. I'd like to call the March 18th, 2025 regular meeting of the Newton County Board of Commissioners to order. I thought for the day, if you're given a chance to be a role model, I think you should always take it because you can influence a person's life in a positive light. Tiger Woods. Now, I'd like to ask my pastor of Dove Stone Church, we'd call him our county pastor, and he also wears a hat of Director of Building Services, to come and have our invocation. And I know that you have another meeting to attend, but we appreciate you taking time to come be with us.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. I always appreciate the board's willingness to open these meetings with prayer. Romans 12:12 says, "When you hope, be joyful; and when you suffer, be patient; and when you pray, be faithful." So with that in mind, let's pray. Father, we come to you tonight in Jesus' name, thanking you for the blessings of this day. We ask that you would grant this board your wisdom, your knowledge, your understanding, and discernment as they make decisions regarding Newton County. Father, thank you for their work on our behalf. I know that tonight there are new people sitting in seats on this board tonight, so we thank you for people who are willing to serve our community. 1 Peter 4:10 reminds us that you are the giver of gifts, and that we're used to use those gifts in the service of others. Father, we know that to serve others, it takes sacrifice, generosity, understanding, empathy, compassion, patience, and dedication, and so much more. And so I pray not only for tonight's meeting, but for the rest of this year's meetings. Father, in those moments where votes are difficult, maybe even unpopular, where meetings have potential to become contentious, or maybe feelings get hurt, in those moments, would you move our hearts and remind us of your love and your grace, your mercy and your peace? Father, may your hand of blessing continue to rest upon this board and upon the citizens of Newton County and the employees of Newton County, and we ask all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much. Now, I ask Commissioner Edwards, would you please lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one mission under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We want to welcome Andre Cooper, Commissioner Cooper, in District 3 tonight, our interim commissioner. Thank you very much. Now, I ask for a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
So moved.
Okay, thank you. I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? The motion to approve carries. Next, we have time for our citizens' comments on agenda topics only. If you'd like to make comments, please come forward, and you'll have three minutes to address the board. And if you'd please state your name and address for the record. Thank you.
Dave Norton, 4357 Highway 142. Item number 16 on our agenda tonight mentions essential personnel compensating during emergency closures. Now, if this has to do with the pay rate, I would like to hear more detail on the resolution on what this affects, whether it has an effect on us retaining current employees to keep them from going to other counties to work. So I'd just like to hear more detail on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Hey, Paul View, 865 Hodges Circle. I'm here to speak on the same issue, the essential personnel. It's, I believe it's a fair policy. It's a way that pays public safety to come in. When the county shut down, the 40-hour employees, they get to go home, they get the day off. Public safety comes in during hurricanes, ice storms, all these different events, and that is a way to fairly compensate them for coming in. Like, public safety also does not get time off for holiday pay. We get, we get extra pay for that as well. So we're required to be here, and that's, I think that's a fair policy. I don't know why it was brought to the board to delete it, but I urge y'all to look at it wisely, and before y'all vote it down, I think it's a good policy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Donald Bowen. My address is 44 Harris Springs Road. I'm here to speak on behalf of the same issue. Having 25 years in fire service, three here with Newton County, going from the bottom of the, all the way to the top, being a
Front line supervisor.
I realize what a policy, this policy is really needed and why it's needed. So if I sound nervous, I am nervous. I've never done anything like this, so y'all forgive me. But what I like is, the reason the policy is there is like Paul said, it's for us, to cover us when we come in and everybody else gets to stay home. I want to thank you for giving me the time to speak, first of all. I messed up. I should have done that in the beginning, but there's more to just the fire department handling this instance. There's four other departments that this policy affects, your sheriff's department, your 911, Public Works, and the EMA. And I want to know if the board has heard from each and every one of those department heads on how it affects their employees and how it affects them as well. So I'm here this afternoon, or this evening, to ask the board just to table this until we can educate y'all on how this affects us. It really does. It's, I hate that I sound so nervous, but I am. But my request is for the board to table this for 90 days. Let us educate y'all on why this policy is needed and what we need to do to keep this policy. I know that from the HR director, she says it's a bad policy. It's, I've heard all kinds of things, but the policy is in the handbook. So these four events that we're requesting pay for happened while this policy was in effect. And to me, I can't understand why they're not following the policy to pay us for the four days or four shifts that we worked. I feel like we're owed 48 hours according to the policy. The offices of the administration were closed for eight hours. We get paid on time and a half because we work more hours. So I feel like 12 hours per shift for 48 hours for the four days is fair for us to get paid, and I would like y'all's comment on why they're not following the procedure and paying us because this has been going on since September. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else? Okay, if there's no one else, then the time for public comments closed. I have a statement that I would like to make. Ladies and gentlemen, for the past 42 years, I've had the immense honor of serving as your Clerk of Superior Court, a role that's allowed me to witness firsthand the strength and resilience of this community. I've served Newton County with deep gratitude and unwavering commitment, and I'm humbled by the opportunity to now serve you in a new capacity as the Chairman of the Board of Commissioners. This is an unsought honor. I did not seek this position, but when it was offered to me by the Governor of Georgia, I was deeply humbled. I've known Governor Kemp for over 20 years, and he knows my heart for this community, my leadership capabilities, my integrity, and my commitment to Newton County. I'm honored that he placed his trust in me. Whether my time as Chair lasts one week or one year, I'm committed to working every day to be a beacon of stability and unity for our county. In these times with so many voices and opinions, it's easy to become divided, but I'm committed to be a steady hand, working with our county commissioners and county employees to continue to better our community together. Despite the wild conspiracies and rhetoric you may hear, I want to make it clear, I did not ask for this position, nor am I beholden to anyone. My only loyalty is to the people of Newton County. I was born and raised here, my family's here, my children, grandchildren, and believe it or not, my great-grandchildren are here, and it is my sincere hope that Newton County continues to thrive and to grow and to maintain its unique charm for generations to come. Together, we will face challenges, overcome adversities, and work toward a brighter future for all who call this wonderful county home. Thank you for your trust, your support, and your commitment to making Newton County the best it can be. God bless you all, and God bless Newton County. Now, as I stated, I did not ask for this position. I'm humbled by the Governor asking me to fill this interim position as Chair, that he placed his trust in me. I am not taking a salary. I don't have a P card, I've never had one, and I'm not taking a county vehicle, I have my own vehicle. My commitment is to you, the citizens, the county, the constitutional officers, the department heads, and Newton County's most valuable assets, our county employees. We all should be working together and working together for a better Newton County. God bless you all, and thank you. Next, we'll hear from our county manager, Mr. Brown. Do you have anything?
No, I do not.
Are there any questions from the board? Well, thank you, Mr. Brown.
Madam Chair, Hayes, we don't have anything under unfinished business, but we can move to the consent agenda to see if that is going to be approved at this time.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the consent? Is there a second? Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
I did have some concerns over some of the, from, I believe it is, I sent an email, I want to clear that up, over E and F, so I wanted to let you know that Mr. Pryon did get with me and explain those numbers, and we are not over budget. We are still in budget and have some savings on these costs. The way it read, it did not feel like we had any savings, felt like we were spending double money. But we do have a savings in both of those categories, and he did provide that for me before the meeting tonight, so I just wanted to let my other fellow commissioners know that.
Okay. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, the motion is approved. Ms. Haynes?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We are at new business discussion and consideration. We are at number 10. We have our Finance Director, Ms. Brittany White. She's seeking approval of the 2025 estimate millage rate for the fiscal year 2026. Thank you, Ms. Brittany.
Good evening. As we have previously discussed in our House Bill 581 meetings, we are required to provide an estimated millage rate to the tax assessor to put on the tax digest or the tax assessments this year. As we have discussed, this is very early on in the process. The millage rate that we are seeking approval at tonight does not necessarily mean that will be our final millage rate, but we are seeking approval of a millage rate of 10 for FY '26, 2025 millage rate. Any questions?
Anyone have any questions? Commissioner Henderson?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Question that I have, you already have answered in the previous meeting, but I just want to make sure that the public knows, is that we're not bound by this 10% millage rate.
Correct.
That we could come back at a later date and change it.
Yes. So we will probably have a final millage rate sometime in July, so this is just an estimate to go on the tax assessments.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner Edwards?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Would you entertain a motion at this time? I mean, is that okay?
Yes. Is there a motion?
Thank you, Madam Chair. At this time, I'd like to make a motion that we establish a millage rate of, would it be called 10 or .010, Brittany?
I think we could just say 10.
Okay. A millage rate of 10 as an interim millage rate. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Is there a second?
Seven.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. I think it's important to note that we're covering ourselves on two issues here, one of meeting a deadline, and two of making sure we have enough revenue generated to cover our budget. And we've all been through some budget briefings this week, I think, so that's kind of where, that's where that number came from, and it's to get us to where we need to be and aim high, or I'm sorry, shoot high and aim low, right? So I think that's the way that goes. So hopefully, we're going to be able to bust that down a little bit more. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Long?
Thank you, Brittany, and I appreciate it. I just about fainted when you gave me that number this morning, but I understand what we're trying to do here, and it was kind of our uncharted territory with all this House Bill 581, that we have no idea what to expect. We are, we have talked to a lot of the department heads about, we've got to keep these numbers as low. I mean, I know I'm very tight when it comes to money. We also did talk about all these new projects that we have, that we, splosh is paid for. Well, guess what? Those require maintenance by the county once those become online. Everybody wants big parks, everybody wants, you know, all these different things, but we have to have somebody maintain those items, and we have a pretty big list of splosh projects that are out there. So I know that I told you guys today that I would make a commitment to you guys to not slash what you didn't want me to slash, for you to go in there and slash it all first for me. And we want to keep this number as low as we can and then see where our revenue is generated at when we get to the time. We're just getting estimates right now of the numbers, and the law says that we have to give some kind of estimate of what we think that millage would be. So everybody don't freak out, we're not raising the taxes and all that at this moment, so.
Commissioner Mason?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to encourage not only the board, but as well as our community to, don't get weary in well doing. And I believe that what this, the intent from this particular board is to do well, to do good, and of course, during our briefings, I remember when I first came into office back in 2019, we were at 13.44% for a millage rate, and I think, if I can recall correctly, Brittany, you may have to correct me, I think we may have been around 60, 70 million, possibly around that time, with a 13.44% millage rate. This board has done an amazing job with ensuring that we have looked at every line in every budget in every department to ensure that we can run and operate from a responsible fiscal place. And of course, HB 581 has really kind of taken us in a different direction. We want to still be able to provide the services, we still want to make sure that our community is, the lives of our community are enhanced. And so, as it has been stated, yes, we're looking at going from 8.2 mils to 10 at this particular point, but it's really to kind of help balance out what HB 581 is going to do and kind of almost stagnate the revenue that comes in. So we want to make sure that we're able to find ways to still be able to provide the quality of services for the community, and so that's why we've gone there. So I just wanted to put that on record as well. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I believe we have a motion and a second. All in favor? It's unanimous. Motion passed.
Madam Chair, we are at item number 11, and that is actually going to be our resolutions. So we have a few that are coming forward. We have the number 11. The first one would be for our Tax Commissioner as well as our County Attorney. The first resolution is going to be R. as in Robert, 031-825-A, a resolution by the Board of Commissioners of Newton County, Georgia, authorizing and establishing policy for the Newton County Tax Commissioner to accept forms of payment other than cash for the payment of ad lorm taxes, fees, or other assessments millage rate.
Good evening, Madam Chair, board. Very briefly, this first item before you is a resolution authorizing the Tax Commissioner to accept alternate forms of payment for tax bills. Georgia law allows you, as the governing authority, to authorize the acceptance of credit cards, debit cards, checks, or money orders for the payment of ad lorm taxes. This resolution will formally authorize the Tax Commissioner, who is here and happy to answer any questions you might have, to accept forms of payment, those forms of payment for property taxes.
Are there any questions?
Leading, Madam Chair.
Good evening.
Good afternoon, fellow members of the board. If you have no questions, it's pretty basic, this procedural and anything else, we should seek out the board's approval for anything because legally, the only form is cash in the state law, my understanding, so we have to get approval for checks, credit cards, debit cards. So it's just a procedural thing, nothing special. We're already doing it.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? Have a motion and a second. Is there a discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, the motion is approved.
Madam Chair, we are approaching number 12. However, I want to be mindful of the time. It is 7:25. Our public hearing starts at 7:30, but I will move into number 12, and we may have to pause for a moment. The next item on the agenda is item number 12, Resolution Number R. as in Robert, 031-825B, a resolution by the Board of Commissioners of Newton County, Georgia, authorizing judicial interim tax foreclosures.
Good evening, Madam Chair. This is likewise a resolution to authorize the Tax Commissioner to take action. In this instance, the action would be to authorize the Tax Commissioner to use what is referred to as a judicial interim tax foreclosure to enforce the collection of unpaid property taxes. So historically, tax commissioners have sold unpaid tax liens on the open market. People buy those unpaid tax liens, and then you have private citizens, often investment groups, enforcing the payment of taxes. This procedure is a little bit different. It authorizes the Tax Commissioner to file a petition in the Superior Court of Newton County, asking the court to authorize the properties subject to taxation to be sold at a foreclosure sale to recover the unpaid taxes. Any excess funds, so if the taxes are $1,000, property sells for $10,000, the remaining $9,000 is held by the court and distributed according to law. So this is a, it is a cleaner, more transparent process. It is a process that does not require third parties to come in and buy tax liens. If any of you watched the news over the past several years, been a lot of controversy about third-party investors buying tax liens. It has become, in some jurisdictions, an abusive process, and it's very difficult for taxpayers to do what's called redeem their property. Judicial interim tax foreclosures ensures there is a, the court intervenes and the judge approves everything that's done. I recommend you do it. It is a much better process. It protects the county, it likewise protects property owners against that abuse. And again, tax commissioners here if you have any questions.
Here are your questions. Is there a motion?
I'll make a question.
Okay, is there a second? We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor? The motion is approved.
All right, Madam Chair, we're going to move into one more. The next item is R. as in Robert, 031-825-C, as in Charlie, a resolution by the Board of Commissioners of Newton County, Georgia, authorizing the Newton County Tax Commissioner to correct obvious clerical errors pursuant to OCGA 45-5-380.
Going to do one more. This is likewise, Georgia law authorizes the Tax Commissioner to correct obvious clerical errors in the tax digest. So every year, as you're all aware, there is a tax digest created for the entire county. It lists every parcel in the county, the fair market value and the taxes due from that paper, from that property. Inevitably, there will be errors. Nobody's perfect, that system isn't perfect. This resolution will authorize the Tax Commissioner to correct those errors. He can't change the assessment, he can only ensure that the tax digest accurately reflects the assessments and the resulting property taxes. This aids the county in ensuring that the tax digest, as submitted to the state, is accurate and corrected if there are errors without the delay in coming back for reapproval. Again, we recommend you approve this. It is, it is very common, and we urge you to do so.
Any questions? Commissioner Long?
Okay, Mr. Taxman, you're going to get it on this one.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, so what concerns me is not you, because while you're in office, I feel comfortable. What concerns me is if we make this a resolution, and then other people are in here, and hopefully they would uphold the law and do this, but in your fourth paragraph, it says on there that you would, you would be able to determine the best interest of the county and the taxpayers to delegate the authority to approve or disapprove claims or tax refunds. Who does that now? Is that the Board of Assessors that do that now?
One second, let me pull that out. Commissioner, one second.
So I can give you a brief explanation. There is a statutory procedure by which a property owner who believes there was an error wishes to recover excess taxes, it requires them to file an lawsuit. So this would allow the Tax Commissioner to prevent that from having to happen and allow the Tax Commissioner's office to exercise clerical errors without the need for lawsuits. Now, obviously, if the
It's time, excuse me, it's time, we want to be sure and convince the public hearings portioned this time. Ms. Applewhite?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, members of the board. We have three items today for public zoning hearings. Our first item, this is actually old business. This came before the board back in November and then January, and it was tabled because we were still seeking additional information. we were still seeking additional information. So I'm just going to go over it briefly, just to recap and just to remind everyone. So it's a rezoning case, REZ 24-000007. There is a companion case, which is a conditional use permit, CUP 24-00009. It is a mixed-use Floe Bryant now existing future land use map. Current zoning is general commercial as well as agricultural residential for approximately 3.5 of the acres. The proposed zone that they like to go to is highway commercial for everything. It is in the low-density rural character area in Alcovi River watershed, and the location is 13 Highway 212 South. Parcel size is 5.12 acres, and the tax ID number is 0072A036. This is located in Commission District 1. Current owner is NGC Holdings LLC, and our petitioner and rep is Nabil Mewon. This is just a brief history. So back in September, we started out in the planning commission, which recommended approval by a vote of four zero. And they also made three additional recommendations for the companion case. On 10/1, or it was October 1st of last year, the BOC meeting was canceled, so we couldn't have the hearing. And then in November, the board tabled the case until January. In January, the applicant actually requested to table the case because they were still seeking the information that the board had requested, and we're here today. And again, the applicant's intent is to rezon the lot to highway commercial, so it's to make zoning consistent for a retail store and a convenience store with gas pumps. And this is a brief site plan analysis. Based on the plan that we received back in June of last year, staff will offer the following considerations. They're proposing to rezon the highway commercial so as to have the contiguous zoning. Currently, the parcels are dual-zoned, so they're trying to make that uniform. When given the existing zoning and development in the surrounding area, the proposed zoning may be appropriate for this area. And we also, we already, all this is just the adjacent parcels that were located near to it. About 3.5 acres is currently zoned agricultural residential. We have two homes located on one of the parcels right now, and they are about 10,076 square feet and 840 square feet respectively. And the parcel is located close to the junction at Highway 212 and Highway 36, and is in proximity to other commercial businesses. The character areas, as said, is a low-density residential, and appropriate land use is commercial, and an appropriate zoning is highway commercial. And this is included in your packet, so I won't read through all of this unless there are any questions. So basically, in conclusion, applicant, they had originally requested to go to general commercial. However, given designation on the future land use map is a mixed-use, and the character areas, low-density rural residential, the appropriate zoning per the comprehensive plan would be highway commercial. Staff is of the opinion that the rezoning may be appropriate since it will be consistent with the various commercial zonings and uses of the surrounding properties. And the parcel also lies near the intersection of two state highways. We do have a, a, a day, just preliminary statements from GDOT. They've indicated that they have plans to improve the roundabout or that intersection due to traffic not slowing down as they approach that roundabout. And they've also tentatively suggested following, the following for this project, and that's one to eliminate the residential access, and I'll show you that in a second. They're also recommended 24 for driveway width, having multiple aprons and the right, in right turns. They also said that they will be coming back in April with additional information as, you know, should the project progress. They usually review a diesel layout when the land disturbance permit is submitted. However, the project will not get to that phase unless the board approves the rezoning today. Recommended conditions, I'm going to go ahead and read this into the record. So should this petition be approved by the Board of Commissioners? It should be approved highway commercial, conditional, subject to the owner's agreement to the following enumerated conditions. Where these conditions conflict with the stipulations and offerings contained in the letter of intent, these conditions shall supersede unless specifically stipulated by the Board of Commissioners. One, to the owner's agreement to the following. The plans or plat submitted must meet the requirements of the ordinance and regulations and be approved by the Department of Development Services. A, prior to any new uses, all permits shall be obtained as applicable. B, must obtain and maintain a business license as applicable. C, all activities for the retail establishment shall be carried on entirely within the enclosed building, except for an ice machine that is allowed to be situated on the exterior front walk of the building. D, there's no outside storage allowed on the property, and no merchandise should be displayed outside of the building, except the aforementioned ice machine. These additional comments, recommendations were added at the planning commission meeting for the companion case. I just mentioned them here. So E, hours of operation shall be from 5:00 AM to 12:00 AM. And F, the following uses shall not be allowed, tattoo parlor, vape shop, and massage parlor. And G, appropriate architectural design finishes, as approved by staff, shall be included on the buildings. So we have our aerial view. This is the parcel that was under consideration, and we have our intersection of the two highways and the roundabout that GDOT will be approving. Current zoning, so it's dual-zoned. There's a portion that is general commercial, and then the green part is the agricultural residential, and they're seeking to rezon the entire thing to highway commercial as suggested by the com plan. We have a similar parcel just down Highway 36 here. This is also highway commercial, and then all the ones in pink are also commercial parcels. All the ones in green are residential agricultural, but some of them have like commercial uses on them currently, even though they're zoned ag. The flume is a mixed-use. This entire area in yellow is in the Alcovi watershed. Commissioner District 1. We have the character area, which is low-density rural residential. This is the survey that was submitted, which shows the current parcel, 5.12 acres. These are the homes that were mentioned earlier, which will be demolished. The residential entrance is up here, which GDOT is recommending to be removed, and they'll instead use this existing one for the commercial entrance moving forward. I will do a close-up. So this is the proposed entrance. The residential one was somewhere closer up here, and that's the one GDOT wants removed, or they won't grant access for that. These are some preliminary red line markings from GDOT, so this is where they're recommending removal of the driveway. You know, they're recommending the commercial driveway to go here, and they've made some modern notations in terms of the alignment in the road, turning lanes and so on, and improvements, you know, that they would like to see. And if there are any questions for staff, if not, Madam Chair, this is a public hearing.
Thank you. We'll now open the meeting for the public, the public meeting. All those in favor of the request are invited to come, address the board. There'll be a total of 10 minutes for those speaking in favor. Would you state your name and address for the record, please?
Hi, good evening. I'm Sonia Verani. I live at 2297 Seaver Road in Lawrenceville, Georgia, and I'm, I'm here behalf of the applicant.
Good evening. My name is Amy Laws. I live at 1035 Carroll Court, Norcross, Georgia, and I'm also here as a representative for the applicant NGC Holdings. So we are presenting our case tonight to rezone the property located at 13 South Highway 212, from general commercial to agricultural, sorry, from general commercial and agricultural residential to highway commercial. We are also seeking a conditional use permit for this property to allow a convenience store with fuel pumps. Both of these actions were on the agenda back in November, but they were tabled for concerns regarding Georgia Department of Transportation comments and approval of the access points in light of the future roundabout project that would be made, as well as overflow from a neighboring lot that has a car lot, so their cars were overflowing onto our property. Since this meeting, our civil engineer has held a meeting with the GDOT traffic engineers, as mentioned by staff, and we received comments pertaining to the roundabout, and we were told that the plans for the roundabout project were not definitive yet. But as you saw in the red-lined site plan, they had some comments regarding potential changes that could be made to the access points. Furthermore, we had one of our superintendents go to the neighboring property, properties' car lot, and they were able to compare the, the current state of the overflow compared to the Q public pictures, which I think was the concern of in the last meeting. And he confirmed that the overflow, while there, there are a couple of cars in the back corner of our lot that are overflowing, they were able to talk to the neighboring property owners, and they did express that they would be willing to move those cars off of our property once development starts.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? That portion of the public hearing is now closed. We'll now hear from those that are opposed to the request. All those that are opposed are invited to come and address the board. There'll be a total of 10 minutes for those speaking in opposition. Is there anyone speaking in opposition tonight? Please state your name and address for the record.
Dave Norton of New Bern, again. I was just looking at the map there, and it's an awful lot of empty space behind the building. Is this a approved preliminary plat? Can they put a lot more than what is shown there? It seems they have a, a lot of extra room in the back. That would, I would think that might be a question to ask. There was an issue before about the roundabout and the entrance, so apparently that may have been resolved. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? The public hearing is now closed. Ms. Appleweight?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Is there a motion?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, would it be appropriate for me to ask Ms. Appleweight a question now or wait till we have a motion in a second?
It's now, now. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Appleweight, so I also had a question about the space in the back, the open, the unused portion of the property. Is that going to be perpetual green space, or, I mean, do we know?
I'm not at this time. I do know that there is a pond. I'm going back to the area, yeah. So we do have like state waters here, so they have, they, they have to be at least 200 feet off of this area, back this way, you know, per state regulations. And I'm not sure about the topography back here at this point, but if whatever plans, the plans that they eventually submit to us should be similar to what we're seeing this afternoon.
Would they have to come back before us for, for another structure?
No, no, sir. This here is the concept plan that they are submitting, and we expect that the final product will not differ significantly from this, and this is what the board is approving tonight.
Can we make that part of a, requirement, part of a motion, Patrick?
Commissioner, if that's, if that's your preference, you could certainly add a condition that says, no additional improvements would be placed on the rear portion of the building without approval of the Board of Commissioners.
Thank you. One, one last question, Ms. Appleweight. So do, do we know the applicant, or do they plan to, to, to do this development themselves, or do they have a buyer set up for this piece of property?
I don't recall at this time. Can I just check with them? Are you going to be building a development, or are you selling it? Sure.
So as from the owner, from what I know as well, we're not building anything on the backside of, it's just whatever you see is what, again, future, like, use-wise, if you, you want us to come back and ask anything that we can put back there, that's fine.
Right. And, and my other question was, does the, the current owner plan on developing this property themselves, or are they going to sell it in the near future?
Uh, no, we will develop it ourselves.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Is there a motion now?
Madam Chair, at this time, I'd like to make a motion. Let me get, let me figure out where I'm at here. To approve the zoning request, as soon as I find the rezon, rezoning 2400007, location of Highway 13 South, I'm sorry, location 13 South Highway 212, with the condition that any additional structures must make, come back before the Board of Commissioners for approval.
And the other conditions recommended by staff?
As stated by the county attorney.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
One more. Thank you, Madam Chair. I forgot to ask, Patrick, so, Shane, I'm sorry, a conditional use permit is not transferable. Is that correct?
It would be just for this particular use here.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. All in favor? It's unanimous then. The motion's approved.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our second case this evening is the companion case to the first. I'm just going to overjust the basic facts. Most of the items are the same. It is a conditional use permit, CUP 24-000009, and again, it's companion to the rezoning that we just heard. And the proposed use is the one, they're asking for the ability to have the same convenience store with a fuel pumps and a retail space in the Alcovi River watershed. So that's why we have to do a conditional use permit for this. So that's one of the requirements for that watershed. And we're still at 13 Highway 212, 5.12 acres, tax ID 00728036. The future land use is mixed-use. The existing zoning is now highway commercial, as previously approved by the board in the last petition. And it's in Commission District 1, and our owner and petitioner, Nabil Mewon. And the history is exactly the same, with the same dates. I'm not going to go ahead and read it over again unless there are any questions on that. And we have the updates from GDOT are the same. Again, they did a very preliminary review. I actually had our transportation director speak, reach out to them, and then I had a discussion with him. And again, they're eliminating the access to the residential driveway that is there now. And they've had a request for 24 with driveway width, multiple aprons, and right turns and so on. And of course, the detailed layout will be shown at the LDP. Our site plan analysis is similar to that of the rezoning. We still have the two homes that will be demolished that are located there. Any fencing for the property must be done in compliance with our ordinance, and any signage as well must meet the requirements of Section 525-020D. The applicable sections for this project would be Section 510-200 for a convenience store. And we do have the requirements in front of you here. They're also included in your packet, so I won't read through them. And the second applicable section would be Section 420-030, which discusses the use restrictions pertaining to the Alcovi River watershed. And the section B, it says, unless, unless it's been existing legally prior to the watersheds being established, they would have to seek a conditional use permit before the board. And B2, it says uses that provide for the sale of fuel for motor vehicles, and number five, on or ground or above ground fuel or chemical storage tanks. So this is the reason why we're seeking the cup here. And our recommended conditions, slightly different from the rezoning, we added a couple more recommendations, so I'm just going to enter it into the record. So should this petition be approved by the Board of Commissioners? It should be approved for conditional use permits, subject to the owner's agreement, to the following enumerated conditions. And where these conditions conflict with the stipulations and offerings contained in the letter of intent, these conditions shall supersede unless specifically stipulated by the Board of Commissioners. And A, to the owner's agreement to abide to the following. So all plans and plat submitted, they must meet the requirements of the ordinance and regulations and be approved by the Department of Development Services. A, prior to any new uses, all permits shall be obtained as applicable. B, they must... B, they must obtain and maintain a business license as applicable. C, all activities for the retail establishment shall be carried on entirely within the enclosed building, except for the ice machine that is allowed to be situated on the exterior front walk of the building. D, no outside storage allowed on the property, no merchandise allowed to be displayed outside except for the ice machine. And we have E, all land disturbance or construction permits will be submitted and approved by the Newton County Development Services Department and external agencies such as the Water Authority, Georgia Soil and Water Commission, GDOT, and Environmental Health as applicable. And F, which is the other new condition we introduced, all stormwater and landscape plans must be submitted and approved by the Newton County Landscape Architect, including resolving any runoff concerns that will be created. And then the planning commission had these additional comments when they made their recommendation of approval. G, hours of operation shall be from 5:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m. H, the following uses shall not be allowed, tattoo parlor, vape shop, and massage parlor. And I, appropriate architectural design finishes as approved by staff shall be included on the buildings. And we have our aerial, this is the parcel location and the intersection of the two highways and the roundabout. Again, everything in pink and reddish-orange are commercial. And then we've got agricultural, residential, and office institutional. It's an Alcovi River watershed. Commissioner District 1. And we have a similar site plan showing the convenience store and the pumps. This is our survey of the parcel showing, it's a boundary survey. And these are the preliminary recommendations from GDOT, which we're removing, the residential entrance from here. They're going to look at this one as the main access point, interconnectivity here with the parcel adjacent to it, and of course, other improvements along Highway 212. Is there any conditions? Madam Chair, this too is a public hearing.
Thank you. We'll now open the public meeting. All those in favor of the request are invited to come address the board. There'll be a total of 10 minutes for those speaking in favor. Okay, if you please state your name and address for the record.
Amy Laws, 1035 Carroll Court, Norcross, Georgia.
Sonia Rani, 2297 Seaver Road, Lawrenceville, Georgia.
So just to add a little bit of background about the proposed development, that wasn't included in the staff report. So the plan includes a 4,500 square foot convenience store, which will serve as the anchor tenant on the property. Additionally, there are plans for three adjacent retail stores, each measuring about 1,600 square feet to complement the convenience store and enhance the overall commercial offering. The entire development will encompass 56 parking spaces to accommodate customers and staff, and there will be five fuel pumps.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor? That portion of the public hearing is now closed. We'll now hear from those opposed to the request. All those opposed to the request are invited to come address the board. There'll be a total of 10 minutes for those speaking in opposition. Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition tonight? The public hearing is now closed. Ms. Appleweight? Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, if you're ready for a motion, I'd like to make a motion to approve conditional use permit, CUP 24000009, with staff recommendations. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Is there a second? Commissioner Long? Any discussion? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? That's unanimous. Motion's approved. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our final item this evening, it's our fiscal year 24 CIE Capital Improvement Element Short Term Work Program Report. I'd like to introduce Resolution R 031825. So the annual capital improvement element or the short-term work program report, we are required to do this since we collect impact fees. And this request is to transmit this report to the Northeast Georgia Regional Commission for review and approval, which will come eventually from the DCE. I don't know if you can see this, but I do have included in your packets or on your screens. So this year, since the board approved recently three additional departments to receive the impact fees. So we have it here. We have animal services, which is the very first one, then we've also got fire. We already had libraries up there, parks and recreation. So each of the blue, the dark blue lines are a new department. And in between, we have the projects or the proposed projects that are listed. The items in green have already been completed. So we do have to indicate that, and then next year they'll drop off of the report. So this, this is the page two. We have roads department down here, and we've got their projects listed. And we're still on roads. And of course, we've got the sheriff's office, which is one of the other new departments that we added. And then we've got some general projects that are countywide below here. And we've got our capital projects listed by department. So these are the ones that we have for roads, and the green ones shows are the ones that have been completed. Library, we have two that are completed, Oak Hill Branch Library, and they did some library volumes as well. Those have been completed. And then up here, we've got, they're still waiting for library collection volumes too. And those are pending available funds. Parks and Rec, we've got the projects that were submitted. And the ones in green are completed. So we had a Denny Dobbs Park Extension. And miscellaneous architectural fees and contingencies. Animal Services, this is one of our newer departments. So they were actually able to get these projects done last year. Even though they're eligible for impact fees, they were able to use splash dollars. And they've got one more pending that they've submitted, which is like a little play area for the animals. Fire Services, we've got their projects. This is also one of our newer departments. They were able to obtain their all-terrain vehicles. And then we've got the sheriff's office, which is another new department. So we don't have any projects completed for them at this time. This is our financial report from 2024. In the bottom right-hand corner here, these are the impact fees we have. We're just at 2.7 million so far from fiscal year 2024. And if there are any questions for staff?
Commissioner Henderson?
First of all, thank you, Ms. Appleweight, for that presentation. And I don't know if you noticed that, and maybe more directly, Patrick, is our impact fees money, are they held in a separate account?
Yes, they're earmarked specifically for these projects.
Okay, so it's just a separate account, it's earmarked for impact fee money?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Long?
Thank you. For the county manager also, we had some series of meetings today. And I'm not sure if, you know, I'd like, I'd like to see changes in this, and I don't know if we can at this point, but I'm really concerned that, you know, when we talked about impact fees and everything, these are for us building all these new buildings in the county, that I wanted to make sure that we had plenty of money in here for road improvements, traffic plans, all that. And I'm not sure, because when we're looking at the, the regular county budget, you know, that's a huge item that, that we're struggling with right now. And then, so we could use impact fees for that. And I see some of the projects that are on this list that are already on the splash list that are getting more money. And I would rather see it go to roads before I see it to go to any other splash items. I think that the citizens, when we talked about impact fees, we talked about things that this development is impacting. And that would be, you know, and I know we have services that we have to fund too, but our roads are a serious issue and it costs so much now to do any road work. And we, I mean, it's taken us 30 years to do Salem Road, and we're just now doing it. I mean, I was the commissioner back then in Salem Road. So it cracks me up that we're just now doing Salem Road. And I know that's been a lot of project, but can we, can we amend this at any point or who does this have to go to? Is it time sensitive? I would like to see a little bit of this money moved around to roads.
Yes, that's one of the goals that we spoke to Shayna, and we're going to reengage the consultant to have all the affected departments, the departments that are actually getting money from the impact fees, to sit down at a table and relook at how we're distributing some of those, those impact fees to those projects and see if we can come up with a different methodology, per se, to get those allocated funds to the, the affected department, which is Public Works at this juncture.
So my question would be, is, are we voting on this tonight or something? Or is this just a report? Because I would definitely want to table this and have it relooked at.
So it's two different things we're looking at. In order to permanently adjust where the funds are going to go, we have to go back and amend the actual impact fee report that we did earlier this year that we approved in the methodology report. This is an annual report where we just provide updates to the state. So it's going to change again next year.
Okay, I just didn't want to vote for something that was going to be in stone and then we try to change it and they say, oh, you can't change it because you already voted on that.
Yeah, no, whatever changes we make to the, the impact fees will be reflected in the next annual update. It won't be reflected in this one. We do, and you asked a question about time-wise, DCE requires 60 days to review this, and it has to be adopted by the board by June 30th. So that's why we're, we're at a two-month head start. We should get it back in May or before. Hopefully, they've approved everything and then we, I can come before the board again and have it adopted before June 30th. And if, if we miss that date, you know, it will affect our local government status, which will affect our ability to get funding and so on.
Okay, so let me make sure I'm clear. Because you're saying two things that I, so I just want to make sure this isn't the goal that's going to them to approve. Because if it is, that's, that's what I'm asking. I don't want this to be approved. I want us to have more money some other places.
Yes, this is going to go, this is, this goes before the DCE. This is an annual update, so we update this every year. But in order to permanently change the allocations, it's a different document we have to amend.
And we're going to have that in May so we can have it in place by the next budget season, right? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, if we, if we amend that as soon as possible, it will take effect, it will be reflected in next year's annual update.
Okay. Because I just want to make sure, I want to make sure we're not missing anything. Because I want to make sure that we go through and we try to make sure that we are, can service our roads too. I mean, I'm not trying to slight anybody else, but a lot of these projects are getting a lot of money from splash and roads is a problem.
Commissioner, if I could as well, and I don't want to complicate things, but the way the impact fee law is set up and the way impact fees are set up, there is a specific fee attributable to libraries. There is a specific fee attributable, attributable to fire. There's a specific fee attributable to roads. You can't move money from the fire column to the roads column or from the library column to the roads column unless and until you change your impact fee structure. So the, so looking backwards, you can change within the category, but you can't move from one category to another. Looking forward, that, that's a goal that we can reach for to shift impact fees away from one project to another. But the, but I think the answer to your question, the report, this report shows impact fee eligible projects, and then it also shows, the ones in green, what projects have we completed. That won't change. Because a, a project is either eligible for impact fees or not. What, what can change going forward is where future money goes. But unfortunately, or fortunately, however you look at it, the categories in each bucket sits on category, and you can't take money out of one bucket and put it into another. So in a way, you're stuck with what, you're stuck historically with what we have, but it is, we can fix it going forward. I hope that, I hope that doesn't confuse things too much.
Commissioner Mason?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Couple of questions. And I don't know if this is the appropriate time to bring this up, but I noticed in the report, we were going back to the Denny Dobbs expansions, and it talked about the walking trail. I don't remember, it wasn't this one, it was one prior to that, that talked about the walking trail being completed. And I think there were some other items that were being, that were showing us, there it is, District 2 Denny Dobbs Park Expansion, Splash Pad, Walking Trail Skate Park. So what do we do if, because Splash Pad completed, Skate Park completed, but the walking trail isn't completed? And it's not even walkable? So I don't know if we can change this for the next time. Because that, the walking trail isn't, it's not even being used because it's not completed. Now, the other two are completed, but that one's not completed. So I just wanted to bring that to the attention. And I, I think there's even going to be an additional expansion to that where it's going to be widened some more. So I just wanted to make a note to that. And then the second item, I know Commissioner Long talked about Salem Road, that's actually Georgia Department of Transportation. So it's not us. So it's, it's a state road, so GDOT is actually preparing that. So we have to wait, unfortunately, we have to wait on GDOT. But I, I'm excited that they are making some progress and we are about to start seeing construction very, very soon. What I recently heard is that, that project, they were, they had put out a bid for a general contractor to do the construction. So they were kind of waiting on that bid to be complete. I know initially I was told it was going to start in fall '23. Then I was told it was going to start in, I mean, summer '23. Then I told it was going to start in fall of '24. And so hopefully, with the recent information that we got, it's going to start here rather soon because now they have a general contractor that can go in and begin to do the work now. So just wanted to put that on record. Thank you.
Yes. Madam Chair, this is a public hearing.
We're now open the public hearing. All those in favor of the request are invited to come to address the board. There'll be a total of 10 minutes for those speaking in favor. Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor tonight? This portion of the public hearing is now closed. We're now here from the, anyone opposed to the request? All those opposed to the request are invited to come address the board. There'll be a total of 10 minutes for those speaking in opposition. The public hearing is now closed. Ms. Appleweight? Is there a motion? Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion, did it be approved, Ms. Appleweight?
Thank you. Is there a second?
Oh, second there.
All in favor? Oppose, discussion, please. Thank you. Commissioner Edwards?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So we're, we're basically checking a box, getting this transmitted, meeting a deadline, and then we can go back and redesignate these funds. and then we can go back and redesignate these funds within the list. And I believe roads was listed. Is that correct? Roads were listed.
You are collecting impact fees for roads and you could, you could transfer money within the roads category. But what you need to do is, is you need to submit this, this is just an update of what you've done the past year. You're not binding yourself to the future. So you need to transmit this to the community, Department of Community Affairs.
So we're making a statement, we're making a statement of where we've been, not where we're going.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, we have a motion in a second. All in favor? Motion's approved.
Thank you, Madam Chair. That's all for zoning today.
Madam Chair, we're going to move back to item number 13 and complete that one. We're revisiting R. as in Robert, 031-825-C for resolution by the Board of Commissioners of Newton County, Georgia. Again, authorizing the Newton County Tax Commissioner to correct obvious clerical errors pursuant to OCGA 45-5-380. And I believe Commissioner Long had a couple of inquiries.
I think you answered my question, but was this previously done by the Board of Assessors?
No.
No, it was not.
The tax commissioner handles all refunds.
Is what?
The tax commissioner handles all refunds.
Okay, so we're just doing some cleanup right now?
That's correct.
Okay, that's what I thought we were doing because some of these things I am very familiar with and I was like, okay, wait a minute now. Okay, so that's fine. I get it and I understand what you're doing. Okay.
It is the role of the tax commissioner to collect and because we collect, we have to issue any refunds that are due.
Right. Alright, thanks.
We have a couple more items, but I think this is open for a vote at this time. Am I correct?
Was there a motion?
Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve this resolution.
Do we have a second? Any discussion? Okay, I have a motion in a second. All in favor? Okay, that's unanimous. The motion's approved.
All right, Madam Chair, we're moving to number 14, which is R. as in Robert, 031-825-D. A resolution by the Board of Commissioners of Newton County, Georgia, authorizing and establishing policy for the Newton County Tax Commissioner to waive penalties and interest when such penalties or interests were incurred due to a reasonable cause and not willful neglect or disregard of the law pursuant to OCGA 48-5-242.
Thank you. Madam Chair, members of the board, as you all know, if, if one fails to pay his or her property tax by the due date, they are subject to the accrual of penalties and interest. Georgia law does not allow a waiver of property taxes. If I miss my property taxes for whatever reason, they cannot be waived. Georgia law does allow the waiver of penalties and interest if one can show a good cause to waive penalties and interest. In the absence of a resolution by this board, someone asking to waive penalties or interest must come to you in a public meeting and explain to you why they weren't able to afford to pay their property taxes and ask for forgiveness and ask for a waiver of penalties and interest. Georgia law also allows you to delegate that authority to the tax commissioner and this resolution will delegate that authority to the tax commissioner. I recommend jurisdictions do this for this very reason. Number one, like you, the tax commissioner is elected. He is accountable to the public. Number two, the people who are coming to you asking for a waiver of penalties and interest, if they come to you, they must stand at this podium in a public meeting and explain to you the worst of their financial situation. And that's a, you've sat through them before. It's a painful thing to experience. It is a difficult enough process for a taxpayer to ask anyone to waive penalties and interest. It's even more difficult for them to have to do it in a public setting. And for that reason, the, the law allows it to be done through the tax commissioner. Now, I will say, even though the request isn't made at a public meeting, it's still public record. There's, there's no way for the tax commissioner to hide this. It will all be done. There is a public record of the waiver. Tax Commissioner is here again, happy to answer any questions. And I would say, I would remind you that the only, in order to qualify for that waiver, you can't have willfully disregarded your taxes. You can't just say, I'm not going to pay. You have to have, come and show a basis for the hardship.
Is there any questions? Discussion? Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So we certainly, I've sat through those before and they're painful. More painful for me than the person standing there, I'm sure. But would it be appropriate, I guess this question is for Patrick, would it be appropriate to make it part of the motion that, that our tax commissioner communicate via email each time he says yea or nay on a, on a, on a waiver of penalties?
I think that would be an appropriate thing. Maybe just an annual or a quarterly report or something like that.
I think that's fair. And I also want to say, I don't take this responsibility lightly. So I'm not doing that at random. It has to be, more in my opinion, it more has to be in an era on our part or the tax assessor's part. So it's not like I'm going to say, well, I feel sorry for Commissioner Mason. That, that's not going to happen. Because ultimately we all have to pay it. If you're late, there's interest due. If you're late, there's penalties due. That's, that's factual and that's something I take very seriously and I don't plan to remove that like that, not at all. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any other questions?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Question I have is, when he relayed the information to the county, relayed to the county manager and he in return maybe informs us or something, rather than just send out something to all of us? I mean, that's the question I'm asking. I mean, how would?
Yes, we can do, yes, we can do that. Get the information from the tax commissioner and disseminate it to the county commissioners.
Okay, I think it would be probably best way.
And I want to make this clear. We, we do waive, we don't really waive penalties and interest at all. It has to be something really extreme. Again, we have to make some sort of an error. Maybe the customer, there was a new owner that the tax assessor didn't notify us or something like that. That's, those are the types of things we're talking about. Not, not random, I feel sorry for John Low. It doesn't work that way. Just want to make sure you're aware of that.
If I could just say one more thing is that most time the people will call us, I mean, well, it's me. Call me and kind of explain their situation to me.
Right.
Which I prefer, maybe you explain it to the county manager when they explain to me. But I have to listen because that's what I ask for. And so I think this probably, I thought was a very great idea for it to work that way.
So I want to make sure I, I, I say this as well explicitly, this is a very objective measurement. This is, I'm not going to be very subjective with this at all. I want to make sure everybody's clear. I have to treat everybody with fairness and consistency and that's what I plan to do.
Any other questions? Is there a motion? Commissioner Edwards.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve resolution R. 031-825-D.
Is there a second?
With.
Oh, excuse me.
With the recommended communication.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Henderson.
County Attorney Patrick, could you make sure that we have that in there? I mean, because I want to be sure.
The language I will add is that, on a quarterly basis, the tax commissioner shall report to the county manager all requests for waivers of interest and penalties and the county manager will disseminate that information to the Board of Commissioners.
Commissioner, Commissioner Henderson, is it? Any other? Who made the second? Commissioner Henderson? Commissioner Henderson? Okay, I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, that's unanimous. The motion is approved.
All right, we have the next item, which is resolution number R. as in Robert, 031-825-E. A resolution by the Board of Commissioners of Newton County, Georgia, in conjunction with the approval of the Newton County Tax Commissioner to change the annual due date for the payment of at-valore on property taxes November to November 15th. To effectuate such a change beginning with tax year 2025 and for other purposes.
Mr. John Stetter?
Very good. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
And Commissioner Bennett. Would you please go ahead and explain that?
Sure. So the default day on which property taxes are due and payable and the day on which penalties and interest begin to run is December 1st of each year. No, I'm sorry. Yes, it's December 1st of each year. The resolution before you, which is authorized by Georgia law, would make that due date November 15th instead of December 1st. At, after some questions were raised, I think by some members of the Board of Commissioners, the resolution has been altered to make that change, if approved, commence next year, not this year. So the resolution before you would make property taxes due and payable on November 15th, beginning in 2026. No change to this tax year. And it would go into effects next year. Taxpayers will receive plenty of notice. So too would, if you have an escrow account that pays your property taxes, they would likewise receive that notice. So hopefully it wouldn't create any, you know, administrative problems for anybody. Tax Commissioner is here. He might explain some more practical reasons why this makes sense to do with respect to just to the administration of your tax system.
Thank you. So today I have a variety of reasons why I decided to bring this before the board. Number one, we are a dual payment county as it currently stands. So technically, we're supposed to have payments in October and December, right? The law changed several years ago where there is no penalty for the, a late penalty on the first installment. Hence, the prior tax commissioner, my predecessor, removed it to just have one payment, which is December 20th, which is perfectly fine. The issue is, while I was talking to a lot of citizens on the trail, on the campaign trail, they expressed frustration with the December 20th due date, which is five days before Christmas, which doesn't make practical sense for a lot of them. And, and I started talking to department heads. I spoke to finance director. I spoke to the school board. They mentioned that it's better for their revenues because they get their monies faster because it would be in November rather than December. So with that in mind, that was the reason why we brought this and it allows us some flexibility. It also helps the tax assessor because once we become a single payment, then she has time, better time to prepare the tax digest. Because currently she has to provide the tax digest to me today by June 1. But by going to a single payment, she could now provide us to by July 15th. So it gives her a leeway. It would help her next year to provide the data we could provide to you guys to provide a better estimated rollback rate. So it actually impacts everybody in a positive way.
Any question? Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve resolution R. 031-825-E as stated by the county manager and the tax commissioner. Uh, county, 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 county attorney and the tax commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Mason, second. Have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Oh, Commissioner Long.
Just administratively. I'm going to need longer arms. Do we need to add in that motion that, that we'll start collecting on 26?
The, the resolution draft, it says so, but if you want to be safe, we could certainly do it.
Yeah, because right now our draft says 25, so.
Okay, I'll restate the motion, Madam Chair, if you want me to. A, make a motion to approve resolution R. 031-825-E to be effective in November of 2026 with the recommendations of the tax commissioner and the county attorney.
Thank you. Second. Commissioner Mason, any discussion? All in favor? It's unanimous. The motion passes. It's approved. Thank you.
Madam Chair, the next item we have on the agenda is regarding county manager and human resources. The resolution number is R. as in Robert, 031-825-F, as in Frank. A resolution of the Newton County Board of Commissioners amending the Newton County Board of Commissioners Employee Handbook by deleting there from section 1118, title. Title, excuse me, essential personnel compensating during emergency closures. Again, section 1118, title, essential personnel compensating during emergency closures. That's going to be presented by our county manager, human resources, as well as our county attorney.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair. I'm going to start us off and we'll probably have to defer some questions. The resolution before you will delete section 1118 of the Newton County Board of Commissioners Employee Handbook. That section provides essential personnel compensation during emergency closures. You've heard some discussion about it already and I understand most of you have received some briefing about this issue. The, the policy as is drafted, I will say, has created a lot of confusion and a lot of inconsistent application. And the effort here is not to take anything away from anybody. It is to ensure that it is clear and consistent in how county employees are treated during times in which the county is closed, whether it be for weather or any other emergency. And the best way, I think, determined by staff was to start from scratch and eliminate section 1118. I'm happy to answer any questions that I can answer. I will have to defer a number of questions to the, to the county manager or to your human resources director.
Okay. Is there any questions? Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So the county manager and I were speaking before the meeting and, and I was going to ask to table this for 60 days, even before the gentleman had come up and spoken tonight. So I broached this subject with legal and our county manager, I guess, a month or so back. And we're, we're actually speaking of some events that have taken place in the past. So, so A, we are, we're talking about some compensation, maybe some compensation that is due that did not take place. But, but I, and I pointed out in my email, 1118 of the, of the employee handbook states, and it gets ambiguous to me. You were correct. It gets ambiguous. I don't know when this was put in there, but it, but this, this language is put in here for a reason. Essential personnel required to work on an official emergency closing day, where they're normally scheduled or at the request of the applicable supervisor, will receive full pay for their regularly scheduled work hours plus closure pay. I don't know what closure pay is. For the actual number of hours worked at the employee's regular rate of pay. Department managers and or supervisors will be responsible for maintaining record. Now, it goes on to say in later, in that same article or section, I guess you would call it, it goes on to say that public safety and fire suppression employees are expected to, to monitor weather conditions and report to work as scheduled. So they are inherently essential personnel. So, and I get that if we had not closed the county on several occasions before now and paid county employees that were not considered essential employees. So what, what incentive does my fire, roads department and deputies have to skate across icy roads to make it to work if, if, if every, if the others, if others don't? Now, we can make the argument that our fire and our deputies and our roads personnel are inherently essential. And I know when I worked for AT&amp;T, we had customers all over the world and, and people in Belgium didn't care if I had a icy road in Atlanta. So I believe, I, I will make the motion to table this eventually when the Madam Chair calls for it, for a period of 60 days. But I believe we need to create some language or, or some circumstances that, that allows for, I don't want to call it extra pay, but it's called closure pay here, but, but pay for essential personnel that do come in or especially if the, the office employee, who, who, and they're all important, don't get me wrong, does not have to report to work that day or those days. And we've had instances in the past that include the bio lab fire and now some, some ice or snow days. So I, I think. So I, I think we, we have, we leave at least 60 days to talk about this and iron some things out, because we're talking about departments where the, the morale is not at an all-time high at, at the moment, anyway. So I would ask, I'm gonna ask, when the Madam Chair allows for a 60-day table to discuss, and I'd be part, be glad to be part of those discussions if you would like. But I believe we have some volunteers, too, that, that would like to be part of that discussion, and include Ms., you know, our county, our, our HR director, and of course, Patrick. But that, that's, that's kinda where I am with it. I would like to, if this, this time, Madam Chair, if I could make a motion. We'll get a second if we get that.
Okay, just a minute. Commissioner Edwards, you are making, you're making a motion?
I'll make the motion to table for a period of 60 days, at least 60 days, and before, so that we can work out something that, a, a, a plan that, that, that I believe was the original intent of this document, to, to compensate those that come in when other, when others don't, to be honest with you. So it doesn't seem exactly fair. But that's, that's why, that'd be my motion. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a second? Who? Commissioner, Commissioner Henderson. Okay, we have, any, any discussion? Okay, Commissioner Mason.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, help me understand, because I thought, and maybe I'm inaccurate, but I thought that there was already a policy in place for those that are non-essential workers that states, if it's closed and you're non-essential, there isn't any pay. But if you are an essential worker, and you have to actually perform a job duty, there is compensation for that. Is that not correct?
Dr. Schumacher?
I'm trying to understand your question.
Okay.
I can just tell you what the experience has been.
Okay.
Even on the days where the building might be locked, we still have employees working. James worked, I, we worked. And we're not compensated extra for working. Sheriff's Department is not, does not receive extra compensation for coming in, doing inclement weather. So I'm just trying to understand where you're going with your question, so that I can answer it appropriately.
So that helps answer some of my questions. So whenever there is inclement weather, and there is any, we're closing to the public, the employ, some of the employees are still working, but you're saying that you're not being compensated, even though you're still working and the offices are closed?
Absolutely.
And so now, what this is saying is, we're now gonna allow those employees, on those timeframes that you are still working and the office is closed, you will still receive compensation just as if you were a first responder, or if you were, uh...
Yeah, extra compensation. So, extra compensation. And I believe closure pay is defined here. I don't have my glasses. I keep forgetting, I'm blind, so forgive me. Um, I believe closure pay is defined here as double pay, as opposed to, 'cause you pay your salary plus an additional salary. So it's not just time and a half. It's double pay. But I could be wrong, 'cause like I said, I don't have my glasses.
If you'll allow me to.
Yes, please.
So, what the proposal is, there's a misconception. So you have a closure pay when the county facilities or buildings are closed. So all essential personnels that has to continue to work to keep the, the county functioning, they are receiving closure pay. That means time that they're actually working, plus the closure pay rate, which is double time.
Okay.
So that's not the case that we're trying to do. There is the, a emergency closure, which is false under closure pay. All we're trying to do is eliminate that part, because it's already, already addressed in the closure pay. That's the only difference.
Okay.
So if a building is closed, if the board of commissioners, the county manager deems that because of what, whatever, if the county is closed, those essential personnels that are working will get closure pay. So we're not saying that we, you won't. It's just saying that because of the closure pay and emergency closure pay, there's no difference in between the two, because the county's closed, the county's closed. So we're just trying to simplify the differences than just by eliminating the emergency closure pay.
So closure is closure?
Closure is closure.
Versus closure and emergency closure?
Yeah, it's a difference, yeah.
Okay, thank you. That answered my question.
Commissioner Edwards?
Well, now we need 60 days to, so I can unconfuse myself. So, um, I, I'm still gonna ask for the 60 days, 'cause I, I'm not sure, I understand. I, you know, salary employees get paid for a job. Hourly employees get paid for an hour. And there's a difference. And, and I was, when I, when I worked for AT&amp;T, I was a salary management employee, and I was expected to do a job whether the building was on fire or not. So, um, you know, but our, our hourly employees are different. And, and I don't know which of these people I'm talking about are hourly, or who's salaried. But I still think we need some time to iron this out, and, and get a, a different input, especially so that I can understand and, and represent my constituents, who, who also are, also employees. I'm still gonna ask for the 60-day table.
Commissioner Long?
Okay, real quick. I was married to a lineman, and I'm still married to him, but he was a lineman for 39 years. I spent every occasion at home by myself, 'cause he was gone. So let me ask you a question. If I work for the county and I answer the phones, okay? The county closes down. I'm not getting paid for that, 'cause I had to stay at home, 'cause y'all called emergency day out? I think they all, I think they got paid. So I think, I think, I wanna make sure that, over here, that, so if I, I am the receptionist for the county. Okay, I answer that phone five days a week. So we have an emergency with snow. You guys close the county, all right? My paycheck is not docked for that day.
No. You're working.
Correct, right? So, so basically, what we wanna make sure we understand is, so everybody in the county got paid when, when it was shut down from snow. But they had to come in also, even though everybody else was sitting on their couch, snuggled up, okay? So, and I understand that their jobs are a little different. Now, then you get into who's a salary employee and who's an hourly employee. That's two different things. I mean, you know, if you're salaried, then you get paid the same no matter what, okay? Most of the time. So I think this, I, I don't like the way this is written, number one. But I don't think we should, I think we should take the time to work on this, find out what other counties do, growing counties that we look at, see how they handle the, the essential personnel. Because I don't think we should not pay them something. I think that we have to be, we, we should be glad to have these people and have them come in and pay them. But we gotta figure out what a policy that we're not getting, I mean, I don't think my husband got double time. I think that he was, he just, I'm not sure how they did it, so I don't wanna speak to that. But I think that they have to be compensated. If everybody else is sitting on the couch, and they're, and then they're coming in anyway, then we have to make that work. And I, I think we have to take time to review this, study it, and look at other counties. Can, can somebody get us 10 other counties and see what they do? And we can look at it, and then, and then we, instead of just taking the policy out, let's have a replacement policy to go at the same time.
So what might be helpful, because we're talking about, sort of, we're talking about it in theory. I think what'll be helpful is if, when this comes back, we can present to you a hypothetical situation and how it will impact various employees. So I think it, I think that's one of the things we can work towards, is presenting to you a what-if. What-if scenario. We pick a day, we imagine the disaster, and we walk through how it affects all the different classes of employees. Make sure you're comfortable with that and that the policy accounts for it.
Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you. Well, 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 first of all, I, I am with the employees. I don't think that they want to talk to us or have a 60-day, table 60 days so they can talk to the commissioners or have a, have a meeting of sort, unless they had something really to say. And I know for a fact that a heap of employees, our employees, have worked for low pay all over the county, and did a whole lot of jobs that, that they represent us in the times of need. And so I think to take 60 days is not, is good to listen to them. I mean, 'cause it's two sides to everything. And I know they're hard-working employers, 'cause when there's a house on fire in unincorporated Newton County, it's the county. And so what we need to do is just look after our employees, make sure they're treated right, make sure that we can give them the best pay that we can that are available in order to keep them working here at home in a county that they love. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other? Commissioner Cooper?
Yeah, I can, I was there, numbers of years out there, doing the working, coming in, storms, and things like that. So I do agree that they need to be compensated for that time, 'cause I know many a time that, you know, didn't want it to go, you know, because the road was dangerous, but I, I knew I had to go and clear my duty as well. So I definitely agree. So I just wanna put that out there, that I do agree that we need to maybe look at it, send it down the line, maybe 60 days, or, or is there any way we can draft, maybe draft a policy or something, so we can look at it, pre-draft it, or?
Well, we can gather the information you requested.
Yes, ma'am.
And then we'll come back. We'll, we'll send it out, and we'll come back.
Okay, great.
And we can further the discussion.
Okay, great.
In terms of what that needs to look like.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I can, I wanna make sure my motion makes, is clear that a minimum of 60 days. We, we can, we can, we can talk about it for more, but a minimum of 60 days. Is, do I need to restate that motion?
Please.
At this time, I'd like a, make a motion to, let me find myself, to table for a minimum of 60 days, Resolution R 031825F. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Second? Okay. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, that's unanimous, so that motion passes.
All right, Madam Chair, the next item we have, and the last resolution, is going to be R as in Robert, A resolution of the Newton County Board of Commissioners authorizing and directing the Human Resources Director to report directly to the Board of Commissioners as to all matters related to the employment, performance, and discipline of the county manager.
Okay.
Madam Chair, thank you, members of the board. As you are all aware, the county manager is appointed by and supervised by this body. The Board of Commissioners, and only the Board of Commissioners manages and supervises the board, the county manager. The resolution before you will not change that. What the resolution before you will do is allow the Director of the Human Resources Department, who otherwise reports to the county manager, to be able to report directly to this board for matters related to the county manager's employment. So, I, I mean, you can all understand the difficulty of any subordinate reporting to his or her boss, and then reporting on the performance, conduct, or discipline as to that person. So if you imagine an organizational chart, the, the county manager will still, there will still be a line from the county manager to the Human Resources Director, but then there'll be kind of a dotted line up to the Board of Commissioners. So if there's an issue related to the performance of the county manager, disciplinary matters related to the county manager, compliance with the contract related to the county manager, the Human Resources Director is authorized to report directly to this board to address those items, so that this board can remain updated and current on all issues that, that relate to the county manager. And this resolution will formalize that process and make sure that it is a process that everybody's aware of and everybody can rely on.
Thank you. Any questions? Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. It is, I'm trying to state this kind of the right way. One of the things that I wanted to make sure when we came up with this policy was that if, if a county manager was, was in the raffle of a drug test, that if he didn't take it, then I think that we as a board should know. And I think sometimes, things like that kinda just get maybe pushed aside, or said, "It didn't happen," or... But we need for someone to let the Board of Commissioners, if a county manager, because ultimately, we are responsible to, to the citizens of Newton County, our constituents, as for the action of, of him, of him or her. It needs to be clear as far as that. Because I tell you, I got a lot, I got a lot of slack when people had learned, kind of, about the missing of the drug test, or not taking a drug test, and it should've been taken, in which I know that if there was any other county employee, they would've been dismissed then. Not wait 10 and then seven days. So, but, uh, we got a good opportunity. And I think, Madam Chair, if you'll allow me to speak out going. But, um, we need to, we need to fix this as soon as possible, 'cause I think that's a, a big part of our morale. Thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner Mason?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm appreciative of the discussion that has taken place centered around this. We know why. This has actually come to having to put this policy in place. I, I think because of our enabling legislation, there were some things that didn't allow this to occur. And so now, having this policy in place, it does allow information. It does allow disciplinary actions. It does allow now for those things to be provided to us, whereas in the past, historically, it was not because of the county manager operations and who they report to. So I just wanted to be clear that, in the past, we didn't have this policy in place. So it wasn't as if this was supposed to occur. And so anything that happened prior to this being approved, it didn't happen. And so we are now providing a solution to what we know that there was a potential issue to. So this resolves that, and it now says, if there is something that needs to be addressed to this board for that county manager, we will now receive that information, regardless of what it is. And so I don't want this board to stay in the past, fester in the past, and try to make it seem as if certain things were done inaccurately because this policy wasn't in place. Now that it's in place, we can move forward, and we can handle things appropriately because this policy is in place. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Do we have a motion? Commissioner Mason?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve R-031825G.
Thank you.
A resolution of the Newton County Board of Commissioners authorizing and directing the Human Resources Director to report directly to the Board of Commissioners as to all matters related to the employment, performance, and discipline of the county manager.
Thank you. So second? Which? We have a tie over here with a second, but. Commissioner Henderson? Okay, is there any discussion? Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you. It'll be brief, Madam, Madam Chair. I think in the, in the, in the, uh, prior county manager contract, there's a word that's more, what, tepitude, am I pronouncing it right? And it says that if, if something did wrong, then somebody is supposed to report to somebody. Now, I know initially, they wouldn't call me, J.C. Henderson, but he's supposed to report to the chairman, and then the chairman reports it to the board and says, well, let's have a meeting, let's talk about it, because we want to get it right. There was stuff in place, except that there were just things that we didn't know, and we didn't learn until after the fact. But I like, this is a good step to make sure that, that hopefully it doesn't happen, at least, while on my watch. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor? Okay, that's unanimous. The motion's approved. Thank you.
Madam Chair, we're at number eighteen. Cornish Creek WTP upgrades recommended work package number two to maintain the overall project schedule. Contractor Reeves Young in compliance with the Newton County purchasing policy, a second request, this is a second request, is required for final approval of the WTP upgrades. The first was actually approved on February eighteenth of this year, 2025.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners.
Thank you, Mr. Bryan.
Um, this project is, again, to, it's a work package number two for the Cornish Creek expansion. Uh, as previously stated, um, we are still currently going through the, the project scope, uh, which is, uh, attached to the price, the guaranteed maximum price that we get from Reeves Young. Uh, we feel confident that this package that we have gone through, uh, all the dotted, uh, dotted i's and crossed all the t's, is that, uh, this is the maximum number that we will see on work package number two. Uh, we are still working on for that number to come down, but this will keep us on track for the ARPA grant, as you know, we received, uh, and we have to be expensed by October, uh, October thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. So this allows this, um, construction to continue and remain on track.
Thank you. Any questions for, uh, Mr. Bryan? Is there a motion?
So move that stated by the county manager.
Thank you, Commissioner Edwards. Second? Commissioner Mason? Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. The motion's approved.
Madam Chair, we're at item number twenty-one, which is citizen comments, and at this section, this gives the citizens an opportunity to come forward and speak for three minutes to any subject of their liking. Again, we are open for citizen comments. Each person will receive a three-minute timeframe.
Okay, do we have any citizens that are coming forward for the comments? If you'd please just state your name and address for the record.
Dave Norton of New Bern. Earlier, you approved a gas station down on Highway thirty-six. I understand that we need to prepare for future growth, but we also need to watch that line to where we're, we may be preparing, but it could also be looked at as though we are inviting unwanted future growth by doing these sort of things. Uh, a good, for instance, I would like to invite everyone that's within the sound of my voice, we have a planning commissioning meeting next week, and there is approximately two million square foot of warehouse to be built just across the interstate over here. I believe it's in District Four. And as far as I know, they don't have a, a leasing yet that's going to move into it. If it's a high-volume distribution, those trucks, there's already industrial in that area, those trucks to access the interstate from there, they either have to cross over the interstate on the little two-lane bridge to go to the Almond Road exit, or go all the way down behind Longhorns to access the interstate there. So I would like to invite everyone to the commission meeting next week and voice your opinion on it, one way or the other. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person? Please state your name and address, thank you.
Maya Allen Neely, District Three. Welcome to our new members to the board.
Thank you.
I wanted to speak on a couple of things surrounding District Three. Um, as you know, we went into moratorium on July of last year, and at that particular time, um, our Director of Development was asked how many, um, applications were en route prior to the moratorium, and she provided the numbers for all of the districts within Newton County. Um, specifically for District Three, I think we estimated between three and four hundred units that were planned for District Three, but our prior commissioner, um, who's now suspended, has stated on various occasions, and even till today, that there's about eleven hundred units that are slighted for District Three. So we're asking for clarification on that. And secondly, um, when we're talking about the funds and the impact fees and, um, spots, we're still waiting on a location for our park and rec center. There have been some properties proposed, and I think we need to revisit those. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you. Next person, please. Okay, if you'd state your name and address, please.
Yes, Elena Sanders. First, I want to apologize to our essential workers who actually reached out to me. The organizations that I work for and fight for actually fight for working families in regards to the agenda item for our essential workers and their pay. I do believe, and thank you, Commissioner Edwards, for tabling that. I do believe that we definitely need to revisit, as well as get the pertinent information to make sure that our essential workers are paid properly, especially during the time when a lot of us, as Commissioner Long stated, are sitting on the couch. So please let us do get the pertinent information for that. I also want to thank the board for passing the resolution in regards to the H.R. Director. I do believe that should have been done a long time ago. And the reason why I'm stating that is because when I was sitting in this seat, it was hard for the H.R. Director to provide information to us because she had to report to the county manager, and the information may be about the county manager. So if that's your boss, it's kind of hard to provide information that is needed. Also, with doing that resolution, I hope that you also going to change your enabling legislation, which is a bill, because that bill also has to be changed to match that resolution. So I hope you all, with a supermajority vote, go and change your enabling legislation to make sure that information is applied. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person?
Good evening, my name's James Peterson. I live at seventy Crooked Creek Way, Covington, Georgia. At your last council meeting, you approved a budget transfer of thirty thousand dollars. No, I'm sorry, sixty thousand dollars for overtime for the clearing of roads and debris from the hurricane that occurred. And when you were questioned about it, some of the responses was, there was too much paperwork involved. I'm sorry, that was my money y'all were spending. If the employee doesn't want to do the paperwork to get the sixty thousand dollar back, let her find another damn job. Okay, second item. You just got through, uh, about the employees not getting paid correctly in hazardous areas. I worked for an electric company for several years whenever I was working myself through college. Yes, I went out in hazardous weather. Check with Snappy Shoals to see what they're doing with their hazard pay. The last thing that I wanted to address was the abuse of the P-cards. If you have a company vehicle, or a county vehicle, the county is responsible for maintaining and keeping that vehicle up. If you have a personal car and you're using it for county business, you're paid mileage. Why am I seeing P-card charges for car washes? Thank you.
Thank you. Next person?
Dalton Bowen, Newton County Fire, thank y'all for giving me the opportunity to speak again.
Would you state your name again, please?
Dalton Bowen.
And your address?
Newton County Fire, Harris, Harris Springs Church Road.
Thank you.
Something for Mr. Edwards. One thing that could help this, clear some of this up, is who's an essential employee and who's not. If you could somehow mark a person that's essential. You missed long, you talked about somebody being at home and they got paid. We still haven't got paid. So don't forget about us, the four shifts that we worked, in trying to redo this, and we get left behind, and the next thing we know, we're not getting compensated like we're supposed to. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Okay, this time, those comments will be closed. Next, we'll, uh, hear from the Commissioners. Commissioner Edwards?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I'll be brief. Uh, I just want to say, uh, welcome to you and Commissioner Cooper. Uh, welcome to both of you, look forward to working with both of you. And, uh, you may come to hate me before this thing's over, but I, I hope not. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Mason?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I definitely wanted to make sure that I took the same opportunity to, um, welcome our interim chair, and welcome our, uh, interim, interim commissioner for District Three. I think tonight went well. Um, I think, uh, we were able to successfully do the business of the county, and I think at the end of the day, uh, that is the objective, uh, of what this board, uh, is set out for. I also wanted to just make a, uh, brief additional comment. I did put out on social media in regards to, um, the expansion of Salem Road, um, and so, um, we want to make sure that we know that that is coming. Uh, there are going to be some detours that's going to take place. Uh, it is probably not going to be the best, um, as they are widening that road, um, but, uh, we want to make sure that we kind of work through it and get through it so that we can get it expanded, uh, so that that whole corridor, Brown Bridge, Salem Road, um, all the way down to Highway twenty, um, isn't as congested a, as it currently is at certain times. So just wanted to put that out there. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Cooper?
I just want to say, um, uh, thank you for the opportunity, looking forward to working, working with everyone on the board here. Uh, looking forward to representing District Three, and also, not only District Three, um, representing the whole county. So, um, I just want everybody to know that I am here for the whole county, for the people, and I just want to, just look forward to working.
Thank you. Commissioner Henderson?
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I too would like to welcome you to the Board of Commissioners. You know, um, I, I, I can't think of Governor Kemp picking a better person than you, Ms. Hayes, than you, Commissioner, uh, Cooper. He chose some good people, dude, that I believe, I also I know, because I'm not God, are good-hearted peoples, and, and good-hearted people by their actions, and I know y'all actions are it. We had the opportunity to go out and, and work together and make our county better, to give our employees, uh, better pay, but I don't think it's going to be this budget, so don't hold me to that, this budget, but to really set forth a path to make our county employers, I would like, want to say, the best-paid employer in the whole state of Georgia, and, um, do things in the community that we never be, never have did before. And so, um, I'm looking forward to it, I'm very excited, and I just thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Long?
I also want to say thank you for you guys coming. Um, it's really hard for me to say Madam Chair and not say Linda, so I'm trying to be really good at that, because I've known her for a long time. And, um, I, um, I'm so happy that we can get the county business done and, um, and, and, uh, stay on task and stay focused, and I think that's what we have to do to keep moving forward. I do want to ask, uh, the county manager that, I have also heard from a few county employees about some pay situations. Um, I asked them to address those the way they were, to properly address those, that I would not be addressing those, but I keep hearing it, and I would just like for y'all to check into that. If we owe people money, let's get that cleared up right away.
Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you all. We, I certainly look forward to working with all of you, and I know you work hard, and I appreciate that, and appreciate our employees especially. So, uh, we'll entertain a motion now. To adjourn?
To move.
Thank you. Okay, we're adjourned. Thank you all for coming.